All right, thank you. Good evening. Before we start our meeting this evening, we are going to start with Mayor Kilway and Chief Underwood with a swearing-in ceremony for our new fireman. So Carol?
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for being flexible enough to put this in before the meeting starts. I really appreciate that. I'm gonna have to stand like this so that you can hear me. And I really want to thank everybody that has come today to help celebrate adding another fireman. As you guys all know, the Fire Department's very near and dear to my heart. And so anytime we add to our crew, I absolutely love it. And I love how both police and fire have come out to support this. Chief, did you have anything you wanted to say before we get started on this?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I would just like to thank friends, family, brothers over at the PD. Thank you guys so much. The Safety Service, we work well together, so we'd be a great welcome to have Austin with us. He comes from Hazel area, and he runs with the Shore Fire Department and the Kirkland Fire Department.
Yeah.
Unless you lied on your application.
We don't do that.
So thank you all for being here. We appreciate the long, long drive and being here with us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So Austin, if you could come on over here. Let's go right over here, and I hope everyone can hear me. So I'm gonna have you raise your right hand, and I want you to repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Austin Hayder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and statutes of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution.
And statutes.
And statutes of the State of Ohio.
The ordinances.
The ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the City of Talmage.
Of the City of Talmage.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
A full-time firefighter paramedic.
A full-time firefighter paramedic.
For the City of Talmage.
For the City of Talmage.
Beginning Monday, April 15th, 2024.
Beginning Monday, April 15th, 2024.
Yeah. Let me sign right here.
Perfect.
And would you like to say anything to anyone?
Um, sorry guys had to hear that.
No, you are fine. You are fine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming to Talmage. You'll love it here. All right, let me go ahead and sign this, and we are all official. We'll get to your oath after we get a copy of it, okay? All right. Thank you guys. Thank everyone for coming too.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming for that. If you do wanna go ahead and leave now, you can, before we start our meeting. As they're sitting there waiting, like, yeah. Thank you. We'll give it just a few minutes for the chambers to clear. All right, thank you. So good evening, and today is Thursday, April 11th, 2024. This is our regularly scheduled 7:00 PM council meeting. And we're gonna start out with our opening prayer with Pastor James Case.
Good evening, everyone. If you will, please, let's bow our heads. Eternal God, our Father, once again, we come to a city that you love, and you love by the acts and the actions of all of us, ensuring our love for one another. We ask you to be with our council tonight, with the administrators, with the fire, with the police, keeping them not only safe, but watching over them and giving them the wisdom and knowledge to carry on the projects and the missions ahead of them. Please keep them safe, allow them to know that you will never leave their side, and also allow them to know that you are big enough to handle any of their problems. Go with us now. Direct us, we pray. In God's name we ask. Amen.
Thank you, sir. And we will have Mayor Kilway start us out with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. If we can go ahead and do roll call.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Adam Bozak.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Uh, Mrs. Gutman is excused this evening.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Moving on to item four, correcting and adopting previous meeting minutes from 3:14:24, regular meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections of the minutes? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Moving on to financial reports. This is always a mouthful for the first meeting of the month. So here we go. Fire and EMS fund transferred in the amount of $255,000, and street maintenance repair fund transferred in the amount of $255,000, sent to council on 4/3/24. The appropriation report, fund report, and revenue report for the period ending 3/31/24 to council on 4/5/24. The March financial reports to council on 4/5/24. The Talmage Recreation Center profit-loss report for the period ending 3/31/24 to council on 4/5/24. Income tax comparisons for the period ending 3/31/24 to council on 4/5/24. Consolidated investment portfolio for the period ending 3/31/24 to council on 4/5/24. The income tax by source report for the month of March to council on 4/5/24, and revenue comparisons for major funds for the period ending 3/31/24 to council on 4/5/24.
I'll make a motion to adopt these financial reports.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions for Finance Department? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please tell her.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes. All right. Those are approved, 6-0. Moving on to item six, public hearings. We currently have no public hearings this evening. Item seven, community input. At this point in time, we open it up to anyone in council chambers to speak. We have two people in the audience, and he's shaking his head no. And the other one, I don't believe has anything to say either. So we're moving on to item eight, agenda additions. I will turn this over to our Law Director, but this is for the approval of appointment of Jordan E. Nab as the new Assistant Law Director.
Thank you very much. I am pleased this evening to be able to introduce Jordan Nab to you. He is going to be the part-time Assistant Law Director here for the city. As you may recall, in the budgets, council authorized a new part-time position, which we're very thankful to have. I definitely have enough work to keep us busy for more than what we can handle. So we're excited to be able to onboard somebody in a part-time capacity. Jordan is currently an Assistant Prosecutor for the City of Twinsburg, so he's very familiar with this municipal court. He has had other experience in other capacities as Assistant Prosecutor over the years. He is currently also a partner in a private firm. I believe that that will be winding up here soon, so that he can focus his attention on both Twinsburg and us. And I believe he just recently received a promotion in Twinsburg, because they're very pleased with the work that he's doing for them. So I do have him in the audience today, and if he just wants to come up just real briefly and say a quick hello to everyone, and I kind of gave a quick overview already for him. But Jordan, is there anything else you wanted to add or say?
First of all, I want to thank you all for having me out tonight. As Law Director Raiber indicated, I'm currently serving as an Assistant Law Director for the City of Twinsburg. I also handle the criminal and traffic matters prosecuting for the City of Twinsburg, assisting with public records requests, handling contracts, any issues involving police officers or witnesses that we need to come in and testify. Very excited for this opportunity, if you'll have me here. I explored some other avenues in the profession of law, as far as private practice, being a magistrate, but I always seem to find my way back to municipal work and prosecuting, more specifically. It's a passion of mine. It's something that I've always been involved in, even as an intern in law school, and even before I made the choice to go to law school. I've had an opportunity to sit with numerous prosecutors and judges from as early on as middle school, and I knew it was something that I wanted to do. I wanted to protect the innocent, excuse me, protect the victims, also protect the innocent, and prosecute the guilty. So again, thank you all for having me here tonight, and be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
I do have a question. Jordan, thank you. You'll still be employed with the City of Twinsburg as here?
Yes, sir.
And in your law practice, you'll be leaving that law practice?
No, that is not correct. I will be terminating all criminal defense cases.
Okay.
As Law Director Raiber and I have been discussed, and we do agree on the position, that I believe the Attorney General has put out that anyone engaged in any type of prosecution should not be involved in criminal defense matters as well, and I intend to honor that Attorney General's opinion. So I will only be handling civil litigation matters and domestic relations matters. And just to, for the record, I do approximately 80%, 90% of my private practice in the world of domestic relations, as far as divorce, child custody matters. So the likelihood of there being any conflict at all in my private practice and my work here for the City of Talmage or the City of Twinsburg is extremely unlikely.
Law Director Raiber, is there a certain amount of time that he has to wind down that?
So it would be what would be reasonable, so that's gonna not be a specific thing. So that he does take felony appointments and has felony cases, so those may take a little bit longer to get off of. There's a process to get off of a case. Some of them may be close enough to term, to being done, that, you know, it's not, a judge is not gonna look kindly at him getting off the case. So we will obviously allow him to continue that. And if there's any conflicts with any of those existing cases, we will certainly isolate him off of those. But otherwise, I, you know, a reasonable amount of time, I guess, not a firm deadline.
And last question, his firm will not be engaged with any work?
Correct.
That the City of Talmage has?
Correct. And they don't really, just for the record, they don't do the type of work that we would be contracting for.
Noted, but that could change in the future. Yeah, yeah, got it.
Yep, nope.
And do you mind if I address one point?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So kind of what Law Director Raiber was saying on the felony appointment list. I've already removed myself from that list, even prior to coming onboard here, or attempting to come onboard here. I was already starting to consider getting off of that list. And now that this is sort of in the works, I've formally removed myself from that list. I filed several motions to withdraw from my criminal cases. Again, as Law Director indicated, it's not as simple as just, you know, shutting things down in that day or that afternoon, right? So, you know, communicating to the client, communicating with the bailiff, the court prosecutor, making sure everybody, you know, knows who is gonna be representing this individual. It's a little bit of a process, but I have been taking those steps. And, you know, the cases that are set out for trial, or, you know, a month or two down the road, I'm getting off of those. But I am trying to resolve some of the cases that are close to resolution, if you will.
Thank you. That's all that I have.
And I just did want to also just note for the record that I have, you know, contacted his current employer in Twinsburg. I've also talked to the judges in court and other prosecutors. And Jordan has earned himself a very good reputation amongst all of them, and was highly recommended, so. I would appreciate your approval here this evening. And the approval stems from a codified ordinance that we have on the books that requires, it says council approval. I think it could technically be referring back to what's in the charter, which the charter refers to council approval of the positions being created. But I'm being deferential to you all and erring on the side of caution, and coming back and asking for your approval here this evening.
Any further questions? No, I'm glad you mentioned that, Ms. Raiber, because I was sitting here thinking about, do we need to make any future modifications within the charter that would specifically call out any newly created positions that we've made in the last, you know, three, four years? Do those need to be made within the charter?
So not all positions need to be, like, put in the charter?
Sure.
If there's changes to those charter positions? That, again, in the charter, it permits me to hire Assistant Law Directors. At some point, we might want to contemplate whether we bifurcate. Some municipalities have a deputy Assistant Law Director or a deputy Law Director, and then an Assistant Law Director, so there's different levels. Because our charter doesn't say that, I, we are sticking to the title of Assistant Law Director, but those are things to contemplate in the future.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify and make, I guess, known that this is a part-time position. The salary wages are set by the council grid for personnel, and that's approved by council. So this has already been kind of assigned and predetermined. Just as an update for those viewers at home and for any members on council that are newer. So there are very specifics. It's not like, you know, he came in the lowest bidder or anything like that, or the highest bidder. So it's not specifically like a contractual-type thing, so.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for Mrs. Raiber, Mr. Nab? Nope? All right. So we should make it formal then by placing a roll call vote?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay.
If someone could make a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination of Jordan Nab.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and welcome, Jordan.
Thank you all.
Yes, welcome.
Appreciate you all having me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our ninth item on the agenda this evening, reports of administrative officers. We have our Mayor and Director of Economic Development, Mayor Kilway.
Thank you very much. I'll just be very brief right now. I just want to remind everybody on council and at home that I will have my after-hours with the mayor on the fourth Thursday of every month. So it'll be April 25th is the next one, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. But please remember also that my door is always open, and I would encourage very much council members to come in and talk to me. If you have a question, you know, let's start the discussion early instead of here on council floor. My door is always open to you. Just reach out. I had my State of the City address back in March 19th and 20th to primetimers and Chamber of Council. I want to thank those that came. We are working on a video of the, of the State of the City, and it will be uploaded onto the city's website. Does take several hours to edit and put this together, so it's in the draft phase right now. It should be ready to be put on shortly. We are working very hard on economic development. We had some business retention meetings with Trident Restorations and S.D. Myers, our Insight Advisors consulting company. They're working very hard with us and working on the strategic plan going forward. They will be at the CIC meeting, which is gonna be on April 30th, and will, you know, maybe expanding their role within that. They are also bringing on another new staff member to help us continue to grow. So I think that's a great plus for them as well. The solar eclipse was a very smoothly-run event. In my opinion, it was a non-event, because there was nothing that happened wrong in the city, so it was fantastic, but it was really beautiful. I really enjoyed that. I think you guys should have all received the Talmage Circular by now. Did anyone not receive the newsletter on council? We're having a mailing issue, so we're working on that, okay? We're working on trying to do that a little bit better. But if, you know, we'll make sure we get some put into your mailboxes, so make sure that you do get that. As you know, that's a newsletter joint collaboration between the city and the schools, just to push out information, dates of events, and stuff like that. So I'm just writing down the two people that need newsletters, okay? We're working on the Memorial Day Parade. Just a reminder to council, it is customary, you know, for you guys to be in attendance and walk in the parade with the administration. Working on the Circle Fest and Light Parade. Monday's the big tax day, so let's get our taxes done if they're not already done. We did roll out an employee wellness program with Motion Connected, and the first challenge started April 1st. We've had a wellness program in the past, and the program that we were using just kind of stopped last year, so it took a while to find another one that worked well for everybody. And so that started on April 1st. I want to thank Ally Schwartz, our HR administrator, for putting that together for us. Our departmental meetings are going well. We're working on strategies to complete for budget items. Strategic planning is going to be starting very soon. We'll put together focus groups from the community and the different organizations within Talmage. I'm gonna have council very much involved. We'll probably ask you guys to have another meeting specific for the strategic planning, and that will be coming up here in the next several weeks, so that we can put together a five-year plan. So we have a vision for the city. So I really encourage your input on all of that. There was a civil service test that was put out for garage mechanics. I think we had three applicants that we're gonna be looking at, right? And then I would ask the ordinance on the flock cameras. I think there were some questions about the flock cameras. These are cameras that are license plate readers, and they, they'll kind of like advise the police department if like a license plate goes through an area where it's of interest to the police, to the police department. So that means that there might be a warrant out for them, or there's, there's a reason why the police have that license plate in their, their target. They're very beneficial. They're being placed throughout the city. The school already has five of them that they've put up. This is something that was in the budget, and then last year on council, we added five more flock cameras to the 10 that they already had, so that did increase the amount of the contract, so that's why we're at, we had to come to council in order to get council approval on these. So you've basically already approved it last year when you approved the budget, and now it's just making it official, because the contract did hit that $50,000 threshold. If you have any questions on the cameras, just let me know. I know they've been used just since I came into office this term, and have been very beneficial to our police department. Okay, any questions?
Is it like, a notice gets sent to the police department? Like a, an alert if a license plate is tagged or flagged?
It works through like dispatch, so like if they're looking for, if an event happens and they know that there is a blue Honda that should be going in the direction of Cogga Falls, okay? Just for example. And so first it'll identify blue Hondas, and then it'll read the license plates, and especially if they have an idea of who the person is, it'll notify the police that that person of interest went through this intersection at this time. And they can track it all the way through.
So it goes to dispatch, and then?
It goes through dispatch, yes.
Got it, okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of follow-up questions for you. Just a few things to note. I know in the past, we were getting a Fire Department monthly report, and I know that's something you and I have talked about as well in your office. If we can continue getting those, I think it may have been a little bit of time since our last, our last report.
Okay. I'll make sure I get one from, Chief Underwood has been extremely busy with a lot of different things, so I will make sure I follow up with him on that. Thank you.
And, and I'm sure, you know, as, as we are such a growing, busy city, I know you probably forgot this one, but I just want to recognize Pat Fairhurst for the great article that I read about him this morning. I should have caught him before he left today, but such a great article. And if viewers at home want to read that article and just take it to heart, because there are so many scams, online scams, and things of those natures that are, that are going on every day.
Yes, that was, that was not forgotten. It was actually, part of my State of the City address was his award and his dedication to that case, so.
Got it, thank you. The, the other question that I have here is, I know we have a few new members of council that have yet to go through the new dispatch center, so if we could consider maybe setting up a time to get another tour of the facility.
Okay.
I know they're gonna have to, you know, approve that or whatnot, or set up a time, but if we could make that happen again, that would be very beneficial, I think, for a lot of us, because it gives a quick behind-the-scenes tour of what it is they do and how they do such a great job.
And it's amazing facility.
It is amazing, so. And then lastly, you had mentioned the five-year strategic plan. Again, we've talked a lot about those sort of things and how hugely beneficial they are to our city. I think if we could keep in the back of our mind, or at least maybe put it in the front of our mind, tying that together with a five-year budget plan. And this is gonna be something that's a little new to us. I know some other cities throughout the county do this as well. They are on a five-year budget plan. I think that would be beneficial for not only the administration, but for council, the city in general, just to know, here's the direction we're going, and here's the projects we already have set in motion. I think it would be.
Well, I think that kind of goes without saying, when you do a five-year plan, you have your budgetary items in mind, so yes.
So, just, but in general, like, I don't know if you, you know, our annual budget meetings, those sort of things. I think if we can get on a five-year budget approval, it'll make everyone's life a lot easier every year when we go into that. I know that may not be the norm as how we've conducted business in the past, but I think that could be a potential, and obviously make updates along the way, sure. Any further questions for the mayor? No, thank you. Moving on to Director of Public Service, Mike Corr.
Good evening. For the month of March, the zoning department had 76 total permits that were issued, sixty of which were the street opening, which majority of them are in the Talmage Reserve. That's all right. Is it on? And then.
It's up. There you go.
Code violations, 40 open violations, 11 which were property disrepair. I need to fix that. I keep seeing that. Cemetery, four total burials, all four were full burials. And then you can see we have 365 grave spaces, 146 columbarium niches are available. Parks and Rec, membership at the rec were 8,066. That was an 8% increase from last year. The visits were down, 22,620, and for the, and the unique visits were 2,910. Believe the decrease is probably due to the nice weather in March, is what I'm believing. March was a nice month, although the last two weeks of April have not been that nice. Pickleball tournament, April 14th, parent date night, April 27th. Youth golf workshop, April 27th. Rec Center summer hours start May 1st. So right now, Monday through Thursday, they'll start closing at 9:00 instead of 10:00. Friday, stays the same, closes at 8:00. Saturday closes at 6:00 instead of 8:00, and then Sunday closes at 4:00 instead of 8:00. And that's kind of been the standard that we've had. The new shelter Alliance Park is 90% complete. Howe Road Park renovations are underway. They are on schedule to be completed by May 31st. The only piece of that is I am warning, the dog park section may not be open by that time, because if you can't get the grass to grow, you're not open on the dog park, so. Macapul, all the pool staff has been hired. Memberships to date are 2,050. There's a remaining 198 passes, and 1,305 of those memberships are residents.
I'm sorry, Mike, can you say that number again? How many were?
1,305 are residents. Street Department, 56 hours, believe it or not, were spent on snow and ice. I don't remember those days, but obviously we must have spent some time doing. I don't remember those days, but obviously we must have spent some time doing it. Five tons of street debris was removed by the sweeping. 550 lineal feet of ditching was done. Citywide pothole repair took place. That took about five days. Stormwater crossover at Elton and North Thomas is complete. That's a picture to it to the left. A big project and appreciated the cooperation of everybody to make that happen. We did come across a squirrely gas line in there and was able to work to get that done. Something new is the, there's a new work order program that the street department is using. It's Open Gov Cardiograph and it intertwines and integrates with the zoning software. So we're moving in the right direction with that. And why that's beneficial is it's, keep in mind, the zoning department's where the permitting and the bonds occur at. So all the contractors that are working in the city need to go through that. Summer paving program, pavement marking is scheduled to begin May 12th, between the hours of 7:00 PM and 3:00 AM. So that's, that's after hours. That seems to work out well for us. We don't get as many complaints. The contractor's JD striping. Keep in mind, it's against the law to drive through the new paint. There will be no flaggers. There will be nobody to channel the people around because it doesn't benefit the contractor to direct you to drive through the paint. So anybody that you hear complaining that they got paint on their car, that's on them. Not on the contractor, not on the city. Concrete maintenance repair is scheduled to start May 6th. We already started removing some of the trees throughout the neighborhoods. Asphalt paving program is scheduled to start at the end of May. That contractor is Cardinal. The concrete maintenance contractor is Don Warko. I want to start with that picture to the left. That's a true, that's a real picture. That's a manhole. There is no such thing as disposable wipes. They do not break down, do not put disposable wipes in your toilet. Toilet paper is the only thing to go down there. That, that was probably the most disgusting thing I've seen in a while. But wipes do not break down in the system. They actually cause a major backup.
Where was that at?
That is actually on Eastwood. So the one sewer backup was on Stadium Drive. That was during March. That was actually on Eastwood on Monday. So. Yeah. Well, it's important. Don't, don't believe, don't believe the labels. They don't, they don't break down. So. Zero water main breaks. Hooray. One sewer backup. It actually, it was in our main. It actually had a lot of roots growing through it. We didn't know that. We cleaned it out. It's going good now. You can see we, sanitary sewer was televised, 5,255 feet. Cleaned was 2,351 lineal feet and 15 water valves were exercised. It's important, we actually have a machine that exercises our water valves. That way they don't get frozen and they don't break whenever we do need to use them. So we try to exercise all the valves at least once every two years. And annual fire hydrant flushing, April 15th. Last year we did it in two weeks, but it could take up to a month depending on the weather. We're not going to go out on a day like today and open up a bunch of hydrants. I mean, people's yards are already flooding, so they don't need to have that added. Keep in mind, it's really three big reasons. Proper operation of the hydrants. You want to make sure those hydrants are working. This is why we do it. Number two, it helps with our ISO scoring for our, for our insurance. So the fact that we do this annually actually gets us a better ISO score, which helps all our house insurances. And then flea, three, it actually helps flush the lines. I mean, even though you run your water every day, I want you to think about your spigot. You're not flushing the lines like this. So this actually gets that water movement through the system, gets rid of anything that's called stale water and keeps it going. Lastly, starting next Wednesday and Thursday, we're going to do a sanitary line replacement through the north part of the circle. This begins at 6:30 PM, goes to 6:30 AM. And we are going to narrow the lane. We're not going to shut down the circle. We're going to just narrow the lane and keep traffic moving. Do expect delays, so especially if semis are going through there. Any, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Rohr. I have two questions. Going back to the hydrant flushing, like what percentage of fire hydrants do we discover that are either not working or require some form of maintenance as a result of that?
It's a pretty low number. I'd say probably on average, three or four. I mean, when you think of the number of hydrants that's throughout the city, that's not bad.
At the, after they close up shop for, for the day on that hydrant, is, are they painting those hydrants?
No.
No? It's not part of that maintenance? No? Okay. And then my other question is, you had mentioned a new shelter. I know some of the shelters in the parks have names to them. Did not know if we had anyone in mind or individual in mind for putting a name on those shelters.
I think Ms. Simons is working on something like that to name those shelters.
Okay.
But I've not heard the names and have not seen what's going on.
I have a couple of names in mind, so.
Throw them out there.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Rohr? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say thank you for, for several things that we had several inquiries about traffic lights and sidewalks. One of the inquiries Mr. Rohr followed up for me was potential sidewalks on North Avenue between Howe and Orlon. And then there was a traffic light study at Community and East Avenue that I think is still in progress.
Still in progress. Great.
Okay. So just thanks very much for all your follow-up on that and communication.
Thank you. I wanted to bring up that councilwoman, Ms. Gutman and myself, the mayor, Mike Rohr, Law Department, Finance Department, we had a meeting, gosh, probably a month and a half ago, just to talk about sidewalks and things of the nature, about how, how we fund them, how we charge, when we don't charge, those sort of things. So I didn't know if, Ms. Gobright, if you can just kind of give a quick overview of what the changes were to that, just so the public is aware of it for the future.
So as a result of that meeting, typically anybody who would elect to have the assessment for their sidewalk in lieu of paying their 50% portion, due to the fact that just costs have risen over time, we typically would assess that over one year for the taxes. So the payment would basically split into two payments, one on your first property tax bill and the other half on your second. So due to those costs and those kind of things, we decided that we are going to extend the, that assessment to a two-year period so that the residents do not see as much of a large hit on the property tax and just give them some more time to get that, that 50% paid.
And thank you for the administration of working with us on that. Not the 100% I wanted, but that's. That's, we're working there. We're getting there and it's good to work with the administration on issues like that to provide a better service to our citizens. So thank you. Anything further, Mr. Rohr?
I have nothing.
All right. Thank you. I'll move on to our Director Finance, Ms. Gobright.
Thank you. Everybody should have received their March reports, some items of significance that you probably haven't seen before we did post our quarterly interest from our investments in the bank. We continue to do well. Interest rates are good right now, so we enjoy those now because when they're bad, they're bad. And when they're good, they're good. It's been a up and down roller coaster over the, probably the last five to 10 years with interest. So we're going to enjoy the return on investments that we're receiving right now. Additionally, we are still in the process, the auditors have been in most weeks over the last month or so. Just to remind council that you all did receive correspondence from the auditors requesting your return. So hopefully everybody has been able to do that. If you have not, please respond back to the auditor with the questionnaire. If you have any questions about it, you can talk to the auditor or you can talk to myself and I'll be glad to give you some explanation behind what they're looking for. And I will be glad to answer any questions anybody has about any of the financial reports or anything else that they have for me.
All right. Got off easy tonight. All right. Moving on to our Director of Law, Megan Ramper.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, council, for your confirmation of Jordan Nam tonight. I also wanted to take this opportunity to make an announcement. It's been shared on the city's Facebook page. But myself, along with County Councilwoman Christine Hyam, are co-hosting the Summit County Prosecutor Elliot Kokovich's Free Women Self-Defense Class. It came to us about a year ago and it was very well attended, very successful. It's a two-hour kind of quick overview of self-defense. We are holding it this time at the Talmage High School. After we'd had it the last time, there was some discussion about trying to get more of our younger population, especially our younger female population, if possible, out to get some of the, these skills and some of this training. So that is happening on Tuesday, April 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it is at the Talmage High School this time in their, in their gymnasium. So we would welcome, it's free. You don't have to pre-register. Just come out and, and take the class. And for those people who are interested or want something more in-depth, I know that the Recreation Center, also kind of based on the success of that program last year, has added some self-defense classes to the rec center. They're a little bit more intensive, will be a smaller class size. You would have to pay for those classes, but you do get a more in-depth opportunity to learn some self-defense techniques. So I wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our Law Director?
Just a brief question. You said that you're hoping to get a younger audience. Is there a recommended age range?
I mean, they need to be able to sit through the two hours and there is some lecture time. So I brought my daughter last time. She was 10 at the time. So I would say they have to be, you know, old enough to have the attention span to sit through the two hours. Now they do get to get up and do some techniques and you get to practice doing some kicks and some moves and some hits and stuff. But it's, they're, they intermix that with kind of discussion as well. So as long as they're old enough to handle that, there's no real age limit either direction, just as long as they can, you know, focus on the what's being said.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our Law Director? Thank you. Moving on to item 10, reports a standing committee of council whole. Starting out with our Planning and Zoning Committee. Ms. Gutman is not here this evening, so we will turn to our Vice Chair, Ms. Epstein.
Thank you. I call Planning and Zoning to Order. The Planning and Zoning Committee deals with land use, zoning, conditional uses, planning, economic and community development and public property. We have nothing before us this evening. Is there anything from council? All right. Hearing none. All closed committee.
Thank you. Moving on to Finance. Councilmember Pavlik.
I open Finance Committee. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments and expenditures. We have two ordinances tonight, both in first reading. First ordinance, ordinance 2024-34, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the purchase of flock cameras and proprietary subscription, which is exempt from competitive bidding and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. Mayor, would you have anything to add?
Just like I had mentioned early on in the meeting, these are the flock cameras that were already budgeted, you know, in last year by council. They're very, very beneficial because we have, because we're committed to this program, we're able to use the flock camera system in other communities and it's already been beneficial to our city because of that as well. So if we could get first reading adoption, then we can get the contract signed and we can get them put up as fast as possible. So I would appreciate that.
Thank you. I was just going to ask you that. Is there any questions from Council floor?
Mr. Chair. And truly, this question comes from my conversations with Councilmember Rubino because he brought up some good questions about this and kind of got me thinking. So thank you to him. But I know other cities have had some pushback on these cameras. I don't see a big, major pushback for us because of the huge benefit that it brings. However, there, in my research, there were some communities that put some stipulations within the agreement with flock cameras that talks about the length of time that we retain the images. So I did not know if you knew off the top of your head what that length of time is. I think standard is 30 days, but I think some other communities have narrowed it down to a much smaller window. I don't know which honestly our police department would prefer, what they would find to be most beneficial for them and their, you know, police work, but if you know that answer or I don't.
I did read the contract, but I don't recall exactly what that was. Because when I read the contract as I'm reading through it, I'm like, but this contract is for $50,000. We need council's approval. So I did read it probably about a month ago because you were on recess last week or last, last time. I do know that, you know, it's $30,000 for the first 10 cameras, then we added the five more, so that's $15,000. Then there's some extra setup fees for mounting and so forth. So that's why I brought that right over the $50,000 threshold. In my conversation with Chief Bohan, there's tracking that, you know, is, tracking use is documented through the CAD system. So there will be data that will be used so that they can analyze to make sure that this is a cost-effective program for us. And if we find down the road that this is not cost-effective, then, you know, it can be determined whether we continue it at that point in time. But there, there is an, you know, an availability to get a return on investment and determine the benefits of the cameras. So I would recommend giving it a chance and seeing how beneficial it would be for our city and going from there.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I was just going to add, based on some information I received, it is, the, the data is not stored beyond 30 days, automatically deletes every 30 days and it's also not facial recognition. So I know that was a question.
Great. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. And that's, I just wanted to bring that to light because I know that some other communities have put that timeframe in this question as to how long we retain that. So I definitely see the advantages of this. I think as we were doing the initial budgetary planning of this, being that I was at the rec center for so many years, I saw the benefit of it at that point, just because of, you know, a missing child, missing elderly citizen, those sort of things. Those would be extremely beneficial to the police department and their, in their work. So I don't have any qualms about approving this. So I will kick it back to Mr. Pavlik to run his committee.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from council members?
Could you just, for viewers at home, maybe talk about why this is exempt from competitive bidding?
So there's certain criteria that have to be met in order to be exempt from competitive bidding. One of them is when it's proprietary software. So this is also for the subscription that goes along with it. So the data, information and the conveying the information back, not just the camera itself. And obviously you have to have their camera with their system in order to get that. So there's not a competitor. It's the only one that does that. So that's why it meets that definition.
Thank you.
Are these cameras leased or do we own them?
Um, I.
I believe that they're owned.
I believe they're owned.
Yes.
But then, like they won't be worth anything if we don't have the subscription. So keep that in mind.
I guess my question is if there's a failure of a camera, who's responsible for replacing the camera? What's like maybe the shelf life of these cameras?
So that's all outlined in the agreement, which is, again, it's like a very long agreement, 30 pages or something. I can't remember every 30 pages, but there's, there's information there as to who would cover the cost depending on what type of damage it was. And if it's, if it's their failure, they cover. If it's some kind of other failure, like if somebody strikes it, like an accident or something, then they're not going to necessarily cover it. That may be something that, I mean, ideally the person who hit, hit it would cover, but could be the city if that person doesn't, you know, if we can't collect from that person. So anyway, but that's all outlined in that contract.
When you guys were looking up this service, did you seek any public input? Has there been any feedback from the public on opinion at all?
I don't think so. I know, you know, cameras, police putting up cameras being used for the purposes of, like, speed enforcement and things like that have drawn a lot of, you know, public comment, but this is not what the purpose of this is, so this is not going to be, we're not, you know, people are not going to start getting tickets in the mail or anything like that. This is for tracking persons of interest based on certain events that they have to meet certain requirements under, under the law to be able to even enter them in, and it has to be legitimate law enforcement purpose, so.
And after speaking to Chief Bohan, you know, we've had access to the system now for a little while, and it's already reaped benefits.
Yep.
You know, I had a nice talk with him this morning regarding just his opinion on the system. And after, you know, reading stuff on the internet and researching it, it was very mixed, but, you know, after talking to him, I agree, it's a great system.
Yep.
In the future, can we get copies of those contracts when we have something like this?
I can, yeah, if you ask for a specific contract that you're interested in, I can certainly provide that to you. I don't know that you want to have all the contracts.
I was actually going to say the same thing. I know that in the past, there's been quite a few questions that have come to the floor that I think probably would be answered within the contract, so I don't know if we need it for every single thing, but maybe the ones that are a little bit, could spark some interest or discussion.
Sure, and if you, if you know that you're interested in it, you can always just reach out ahead of time, and then we can give you a copy.
Thank you.
Any other, or any further questions? With that, since the mayor would like to do this in first reading, is there a motion?
A motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes. Okay, with that, the Ordinance 2024-34 passes with a motion of six to zero. The next ordinance up is 2024-35, Exhibit A, expressing the intent to sell unneeded, obsolete, or unfit vehicles and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Public Service Director Mike Rohr. This ordinance has been read into record. Mr. Rohr, would you like to add?
Yeah, so this is, we're just cleaning up some, some vehicles. These, I believe, two of them are police cruisers, and I can't remember what the third.
We just received our new ambulance, so this will be getting rid of the current one that we have. We decided last year that it would be better for us to sell it via auction than trade it into the dealer. We felt we would get a better value.
This goes on govdeals.com?
Yes.
Yes.
Any, any, any questions for Mr. Rohr? With that, I'll entertain a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolas.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Okay, with that, Ordinance 2024-35, Exhibit A, passes with a motion of, vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before Finance Committee this evening? Okay, with that, hearing none, I will close Finance Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to our Personnel Committee with Councilmember Bolas.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I call Personnel Committee to order. We have no ordinances or any legislation this evening. Does anyone on council or administration or the public have anything before Personnel Committee this evening? I just wanted to add congratulations to our new Assistant Law Director, as well as our new firefighter. All right, I will close Personnel Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our Safety Committee, Councilmember Rubino.
I call Safety Committee to order. The Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire, and paramedics, police, and health. We currently have no legislation before us tonight. Does anybody have any questions for the Safety Committee? Hearing none, I close Safety Committee.
Thank you. Moving on to Community Issues, Councilmember Roy.
I call Community Issues to Order. Community Issues Committee deals with Parks and Recreation, Civil Affairs, and the liaison between council and the Recreation Board.
Mr. Roy, I have one question, falls under Parks and Recreation. We obviously have a very popular summer camp program, and I know that from personal experience, but also just by viewing anything online on our Facebook page or on social media, it fills very, very quickly. So I guess at this point in time, obviously, we know the program's popular. Any business would typically play to their strengths, so if something is a good seller, they're going to continue to market that, continue to sell that product. So I challenge the administration to find a way to make a change to the program that would allow more people to experience the program. So I know that there's, there has always been some discussion about restrictions on the number based on the number of kids we can get onto a bus and those sort of things. I challenge you to think outside the box, to come up with a way that we can create a program that perhaps doesn't require that transportation, or that would allow us to use a different form of transportation. So just thinking outside the box, because I know that the program is a good program and that there are many more people out there that want to experience this program, and if it's working, clearly, it's working, it's popular, we should find a way to continue to help grow that, so.
Yes, so we'll look at that for 2025.
Thank you.
Mr. Rohr, I've also received feedback from a couple of people, and possibly a suggestion that was brought up by one of them, is to reward and incentivize REC membership by giving members of the REC Center first dibs on some of those spots. Her priority, just a suggestion.
It's a good suggestion. Look at that as well.
Okay, do we have anything else to discuss? If not, we'll go ahead and close Community Issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our Public Service Committee with Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycling, waste and trash. We have nothing before us this evening as far as legislation. For myself, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Rohr, in working with me on some questions I had about some sidewalks and adding the native tree designation on the website, so I appreciate working on that with me. Is there anything else from council, administration, or the public?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a question for the administration. When is our next recycling, waste, and trash contract up for renewal?
I believe it's June or July of '25.
Okay. And how often do we do that? Is it like a two-year, three-year? It's a five-year program? Okay, five-year. And then with our, obviously, water and sewer is kind of always a very popular topic and always being discussed, but have we heard anything else in relation to the, I don't recall, I think it was the EPA that was going to require the city of Akron to expand the...
Storage.
Yeah, the storage.
They're still pushing that, and I believe that, I believe there's a dissent, they are still pushing that, and the city of Akron has gotten, they've, they've not gotten any favor, so they still are being asked to move forward with that project.
Okay. And then when do we negotiate our rates again? Is that coming up?
Water rates would be in 2025.
2025. Now, is that already our pre-negotiated ones? That's when the new rates come out, or this will be the next turnaround of...
This will be the negotiations.
Okay. So has there been a Consumer Price Index increase going into 2025 that we are made aware of yet?
Not that we're made aware of, but the, but there is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything further? All right, hearing none, I close committee.
Thank you. Moving on to our Reports of Special Committees, we have our Council Operations Committee. Nothing noted, but I will turn it over to Councilmember Bolas.
Thank you. Just a quick update that the microphones that are being upgraded are in back order, and those should be here in June. And everything else looks really amazing. I'm really happy with the new equipment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I know our, I believe it might have been a month or two ago, we got some viewership numbers for our YouTube channel, and I know it's, it's getting good numbers. I know earlier, because I haven't pulled up here on my screen, but we were up to 15, 16 people viewing live, so I know that that's a very, sounds like a small number, but I think it's, they're almost turned into viewing parties now. For the council meeting, I know that there's a viewing party right now happening at my parents' house, which expands beyond Talmadge, because they, we have some relatives in from Florida, so I want to say hello to them. But I know that we are experiencing growth in that area, so continue to promote it if you have your social media page. I think it's a great extension and outreach to our community members to be as open and transparent with them as possible, so.
Yep, I agree. Just was going to add that I'll have viewership numbers for you by tomorrow.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on, do we have any other special announcements to be made? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Jonathan Bolas.
Yes.
Adam Bozak.
Yes.
Janet, or Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
All right, the time is 8:03 PM, and we are adjourned.